Our reconvened meeting to order from March fourteenth for our budget work session for today, Wednesday, March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, and we have seven supervisors of seven supervisors present, therefore, we have a quorum.
I call the joint board session, a budget session with their Board of Supervisors on behalf of the Buckingham County School Board to order, and we are seven of seven strong as well.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman. Our next item is item B, invocation and pledge of allegiance. Vice Chairman Chambers, would you please, please lead both boards in an invocation, and then we will all say the pledge of allegiance in unison, please.
Shall we pray? Gracious eternal God, we come right now with thankful and grateful hearts. We thank you for your many blessings, knowing you've been our help in ages past, and yours a hopeful years to come. And as we come to this budget work session, we pray that we get on one accord and do what is pleasing in our sight. Help us to do what for, for the best we can. Ask you to bless all our members of the kin, boards, both boards, and we can work together in peace and harmony. This is actually a prayer tonight.
Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. We'd like to welcome the school board members and their staff here. It's nice to see everyone, and thank you for coming as we navigate this budget process together. Our next item is item C, Dr. Keeler, but before we do that, we have a statement or two that needs to be read, so I'll call on Supervisor Brian.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm advising that I have sought an opinion from the Commonwealth attorney concerning any conflict I may have in participating in discussions and voting on the county's budget, because I am a school teacher for the Buckingham County School System. I have reviewed, received a written opinion from Mr. Beasley that I can participate in the discussions and vote on budget matters. The Code of Virginia requires that I make a statement concerning my situation. Accordingly, I make the following statement for the record. I will participate in the discussions and vote on matters relating to the adoption, as well as the adoption of the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one Board of Supervisors budget for the county. That should be two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, twenty-two, twenty-three, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, twenty-two, twenty-three. Board of Supervisors budget for the county, going way back in time. I am a school teacher employed by the Buckingham County School Board, which is funded in part by allocations from the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors. I am a member of a profession, the members of which are affected by the transaction. I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, and I do not set the budget or authorize the expenditures of Buckingham County School Board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Brian. I too have a statement that I'd like to read. I am advising that I have sought an opinion from the Commonwealth attorney concerning any conflict I may have in participating in discussions and voting on the county's budget, because I am an employee of Piedmont Senior Resources. I have received a written opinion from Mr. Beasley that I can participate in the discussions and vote on budget matters. The Code of Virginia requires that I make a statement concerning my situation. Accordingly, I make the following statement for the record. I will participate in discussions and vote on matters relating to the adoption, as well as the adoption, of the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Supervisors budget for the county. I am an employee of Piedmont Senior Resources, which is funded in part by allocations from the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors. I am a member of a group of employees of Piedmont Senior Resources, the group being more than three, which are affected by the transaction, and I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I do not set the budget or authorize the expenditures of Piedmont Senior Resources. So, thank you for indulging us in those. Now, Dr. Keeler, Superintendent, or interim Superintendent of Buckingham County Public Schools, I believe, we're gonna have a presentation for the requested twenty-two, twenty-three budget, sir.
Thank you so much, and good evening, board members. Good to see you all. I thank you for the opportunity to present Buckingham's school budget for two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. Before I start, I'd like to take a moment to thank you all on behalf of the school board for allowing us to locate our alternative ed program in the Arts Building. We're in a, just tomorrow, we'll complete our third week, and we haven't lost anybody, and that, and it's, it's going quite well. I also want to thank you again and remind you of the metal detectors that you bought us and back in December, and we have used those things every school day. And the good news about it is that you haven't heard any, any bad things about it, so they've been a good deterrent. We, at that time, ordered four, and we finally got them in, JB, and last week, so we got four, several down at the middle school and a couple more where we needed them. So, thank you all. And I'd like to, tonight, give you an update where we're at with the budget process. And I think the, the first place we'd like to start was with the ADM, which is the Average Daily Membership. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I've never been around so many gadgets in my life. I'm a real treat. We are, we, of course, as you know, we receive our state funding based on our average daily membership. So, when you build a budget, you have to, superintendents have to take a guess sometime, what do you think it's gonna be at the end of September? I know when school starts, I usually, in, in, in Buena Vista, I would take the, I would call them every day. I want to know how many kids we have, and if new people coming in, because by the end of September, I gotta have a number. And I, if, if my number that I built the budget on is under that number, I'm in pretty good shape. But if it's reversed, you know, we're sweating a little bit. And so, that's why I wanted to take you a minute to, to talk about ADM. If you look at twenty-one, twenty-two, we are at eighteen thirty-two point three-three, that's, you know, that's an average. We built the budget off of eighteen seventeen, whatever it was, you know, in the cap tool, and I felt good about that, because it's, that's low, that's where you want it. So, anything above it, you, you're in pretty good shape. But I want to also, I want to also talk about, and I probably all do this over on the next page, which is school ADM, five-year comparison, if you, if you could slip, slip to that, please. I think this, this graph really gives you a, a good idea of where we stand as a division by school. And I'm gonna start up at the top. You look, a five-year growth that at the high school, we have been increasing a little bit every year, and to we're at a point that we're about five ninety-seven for the high school this year. That's pretty good. I, I predict that next year, with the, the large eighth grade class we got coming, will probably be, I, I wouldn't be surprised in the six thirty range, you know, with the seniors going out and the eighth graders coming in, and maybe even higher. That's encouraging. And, and the same thing with the, the middle school numbers, they've been consistently stable. Year before last, my copy's not really good. Is, is that five thirty-three?
Thirteen.
Five thirteen? And, you know, and we're at four ninety-eight this year. That's pretty decent. But then, when you, when you get down to the elementary numbers and the primary numbers, you see we, we, we have dropped off. And I want to talk to you about that, because the pandemic, we celebrated on March eighteenth, two years in the pandemic. I can remember vividly. It, it changed, it changed education in this state and in this nation. And all of a sudden, we were faced with a learning package to get out to everybody, and we were hustling, and all of a sudden, virtual instruction became top priority, and we had to train people right away. And I found this out over the time period, that elementary kids and primary kids are, are so dependent on their parents to help them. And I, I also found out, by, by observing, that when you got a young child, a kindergartner or first grader or second grader, that needs that help of the parent to get online, and, and mom and dad are working jobs, and they come home, and they, you know, they trying to get the meal together, and then at five thirty, six o'clock or six thirty, they're sitting down with the child and trying to get online and, and helping with the lesson. It, it, I found out, it creates frustration a lot of times. And, and people are desperate, and I, I've seen this in my own school division. We decided that, you know, we were gonna stay in when, when it broke, you know, you know, I'm talking about, year before last, when people were deciding, are we gonna stay out, or are we gonna go in? And I, I, I'm a part of Rockbridge County. Rockbridge is a big school system, and they have Lexington School System and Buena Vista. And I thought we were all on the same page, I'll be honest with you, up until the last minute, and, and the, the other two dropped out, and I was there by myself. And, and I talked to my board, and they said, let's stick with it. And, and a lot of it had to do with just that fact, how to, how are we gonna make sure that the little ones are gonna be served? So, we decided on a schedule of Monday through Thursday, every day, for kindergarten through grade seven, and Friday would be a virtual day, which was really a catch-up day, too, for the staff. Then at the high school, we did a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday rotation, because I couldn't, we're six feet distance apart, I, my rooms weren't big enough, and, and I had a lot, a lot more courses. But the high school kids and the middle school kids did well, all through that, with this schedule. With the little ones, we really had to help, because we found out that mom and daddy gave up trying to help so much during the first nine weeks. So, we got them back, which was good for us. It was so good for us that we did it, we did as well on our testing that year than, than we did the year before. And, and that's a credit to our teachers. So, I, I say this, because a lot of times, you know, a lot of times, we, we think that we got the answer, and we don't have it until we get right in there and, and deal with it. And I, I wasn't, I wasn't sure what to do with the little ones, but I think because of masks have been optional now, I, I think that, that we, I, I just feel like we're getting back to business. And I'm optimistic that if we continue this, that we'll see these numbers go back up. Now, they're not gonna overnight. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that, oh, we're gonna gain a hundred and forty kids back. I'd like to tell you that. But I, because when, all, I had the best year of Buena Vista, the year that everybody else stayed, stayed home, and I went in, because a lot of their kids came to me. I picked up eighty-two kids. That was the best year, budget year I ever had, because it was about six thousand dollars per kid coming in, and, and, you know, you can do the math, and that was a good thing for us. But, but now, normality is important. Getting back to where it, what it used to be, talking to them, and, and this is the first time our group of kids here in Buckingham have been together this long, in a long time. And I'm seeing it getting better. Prom is coming back. Been three years, China, three years since we had a prom. I wa, I went and watched a baseball game the other day, high school baseball game. It's been three years since I could see that thing. And wait, man, I tell you one thing, we got a good kid, too. Probably should be watching him on TV. But the, the thing, when you, when you think about the prom and, and getting back to business, that's when things start to come back together. So, tonight, I wanted to tell you that, that the high school and, and, and middle school numbers are not, are telling us, just like everybody else says, you know, they're gonna be okay, because they can handle it. We still got kids online, not, not that many, but they're online because they, they can get ahead. They're online as a junior or senior, because they got a job, and, and I could pass, and I can go to work. So, that makes sense to me, and, and I encourage stuff like that, if we could get ahead. But, you know, I, but I do wanna see them. And, and if we see them, and, and we, we can talk to them, and we find out what's going on with them, and what we could do, we have had a blessed year. The Anderson child, got Harry Bird Scholarship.
Jalen.
Yeah, yeah, mhm. First-class kid, first-class kid, Michigan State University. And I don't think, that's a twenty thousand dollar scholarship, and probably the first one, anybody's won in, in Buckingham. I can't, I, I'm from that area up there, and Harry Bird didn't give us any of those scholarships, I can tell you. But I'm, I'm proud of, of what our kids are doing, and you, and you, you guys know, we're gonna have twenty-five, probably, graduate with a associate's degree before they graduate from high school. That's something to think about. I, I'd tell you, it's good to be associated with these kind of kids, I can tell you that right now. I, I, I sent you an article up there, we lost forty-six thousand kids in the pandemic in Virginia. Didn't come back. And out of a hundred and thirty-two divisions, a hundred and twenty-one of them, no, excuse me, a hundred and eleven of them lost kids. So, I mean, we're not by ourselves. Seventeen thousand five hundred, I think it said in the article, is homeschooled. And, and a number of them went to, you know, Christian schools or private schools. And it's not, it's not because it was a slap that we, you know, we don't like you, it's because the people were desperate. I want to get my children in somewhere. That's why, that's why Rockbridge kids came over to Buena Vista, that's why Lexington kids came. We, you know, we want it, we want my, our children in school. So, I hope that, I hope that makes sense. And the staff here has done everything they can as far as mitigation. You know, we're, we're fogging stuff, you, you know, wiping down, we're, we're checking behind, just because we're at this point, we don't, we don't stop our habits. We gotta, we don't want, because something, if, you know, a variant is gonna pop up again, with, with another crazy name, and, you know, it'd take you six months to figure out what, how to say it, and then by that time, somebody's got a booster shot for it, and, and we'll go on. But I just feel like now, we are in a, a, a place where we can really move on. If you go over to the next slide, it's state budgets. The governor's budget came out on December sixteen twenty-one. Now, these increases are Buckingham County's increases, okay? His budget, there's a three billion, one hundred fifty-five thousand, hundred, two-dollar increase for Buckingham County. And he, he did put in, which I really like, a million, six hundred fifty-eight thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars in school construction for Buckingham. I, I, I really hope that stays in. And you, and all of you up there know, we're, we're not, we don't have a, a state budget yet for schools, but I, I really pray that that stays in, because that's a big help for us for the next couple of years. And then, a five percent raise in the four hundred sixty-six thousand, forty-five dollars towards that. The Senate's budget mirrors that a lot, where those key, two key things. It's a three million, four hundred and four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollar increase with that construction amount there that we need, and four hundred seventy-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars compensation supplement for a five percent raise. We give a five percent raise, that doesn't cover everybody. That's the standards of quality, which is about fifty-five, sixty percent of it. And then we have to make up the rest of it to give everybody a five percent raise. But we, we feel, we feel good that we can do that, we hope so. And, and honestly, I should have said this upfront, hi, my name is John Keeler, and I'm, I'm asking for the same amount of money as you had, give me last year, okay? I don't want you to think I got all kinds of this money now. I, I need your all's help, all right? But then the House, the House's compensation was four percent with three hundred seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars, and a one-time bonus of one percent, that seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars, which is not far off of what the total compensation is, you know, for the, you know, that the Senate's offer. But those are, those are encouraging things, and we hope and pray that they'll come back. Now, I heard, just like you guys did, that they were two to three billion dollars apart. I just hope it's not in education that that far apart, but, but I hope that they get it back. I, but I've been told also that don't expect one before, a budget before the middle of April, and it could even go later. Y'all remember a couple of years ago, went pretty damn late, almost got to June. And so, the, the, the highlights of it, we put the ADM of our twenty-one, twenty-two, and the one that we made the budget on, on twenty-two, twenty-three, of course, that's a variance of ninety-three. The composite index went down point three four two two to point three two seven three. The lower goes, the more, as you guys know, the more compensation we're, we're, we can get from the state. The VRS professionals, the rate was sixteen point six two. We were, we were kinda hoping, there was some talk earlier, that they may drop that some for us, which for school divisions, our size would probably be at about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming back to us. But it never got traction enough that to materialize. It may still, but I don't think so. But it, it, there was a drop in the non-professional group of VRS from four point nine eight percent to three point two five percent of one point seven three. And, and that's for VRS, rate for bus drivers and, and, help me.
Cafeteria workers.
Cafeteria workers. Then the not, group life, healthcare, all those rates are the same. DPI slots, what that means is that last year, we got se, we got funding for seventy-three slots. Now, I never have ever got enough slots that I had kids. And, and I, and I, I never turned away a kid. I mean, pre-K, if, if, if you're having a bad day, let me give you some advice. If you have a bad day, go read to the pre-K kids. I did that for five straight days on my, that book about the little blue truck, and I'm telling you, once, I, I haven't felt that good in a long time. And they are sharp. They are sharp, because we got good people over there working with them, and, and if, if that's what it's gonna do, the future looks bright for us, I can tell you. So, whatever we get shows up, we're gonna find some money in our budget to make sure we can keep them, okay? I don't want you to think that fifty-four is all we gonna have, because, you know, that's just, that's just where they think we are, okay? Never get that number right. And then the revenues for twenty-two, twenty-three, the proposed budget, Wendy's gonna help me go over that. Go ahead, Wendy.
So, this is comparison of the totals in the areas for regular operations versus this current year's budget. For our local, that's our internal local revenue, that's on the first line. We're projecting another five thousand dollars. We're proposing to have an auction sale this year, so we're proposing that'll be additional revenue in that line. And the state funds, additional nine hundred ninety-eight, eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That is based on the House budget that Dr. Keeler spoke of earlier, and that's the regular operations portion. SOQ programs increased three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty. Incentives, four hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-six. Categorical, two hundred and thirty-five dollars, and lottery, one hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight. Our other state is other state grants. We are, we are losing the social, the school security officer grant. We cannot apply for that anymore. We are applying for a new security officer at the middle school, and we plan on locally funding the one that we have on CGW. So, that is a reduction of that grant. We're also losing a behavioral, it was a one-year grant, a behavioral specialist grant. We're losing that. That reduces that line by forty-seven thousand, twenty-nine dollars. In the federal line, we're reducing it three million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And that is spend down of all our CARES and ESSER grants that we have gotten, that is the majority of that line. County appropriations, as Dr. Keeler spoke of, we are requesting the same amount that we received July one of this year, seven million, five hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. That is a reduction of eight hundred and three thousand, two hundred and ten dollars, and that is the local appropriation that you all gave us back for the roof project. We are proposing that'll be fifty percent done by July one, based on Mr. Heslip's recent meetings with architects. So, we will not carry those funds into next year. Total reduction in the revenues for the regular operations is three million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. For our cafeteria budget, in local, we are proposing an additional fifty thousand dollars, and that's because the fund's been running well, and we're projecting that we'll have another fifty thousand dollars at the end of the year in our local revenues. State has given us additional twenty-one thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars, and that is for their, their portion of lunch and breakfast grants. The federal funds are lowering seventy thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars, and that is a reduction of a one-time USCA emergency operations grant, as well as ESSER spend down. So, that's only additional three hundred and ninety dollars for this program. Total revenues reduction for the entire budget, a reduction of three million, two hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. And Dr. Keeler will speak with you all about our insurance renewal.
Well, health insurance hasn't changed. I wish I could announce some positive stuff about it, but we are presently with Anthem, and on February eighth, we received their first proposal for a fifty-four point four percent increase. As you can see up there, we currently pay with them two hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars per month for two million, eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Now, their increase would Now, their increase would be, uh, that fifty-four point four percent increase would add another one million, five hundred seventy-five thousand, one hundred thirty-seven dollars to that, which make the, uh, a to- grand total of four point four million for three hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred nine dollars per month. That's an additional hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred sixty. I've never, ever, I've been fooling with, uh, this is my twelfth year in finance. Never heard of a renewal of fifty-four, uh, point four percent. And, uh, so, we, we had a, uh, a meeting with them and our, uh, broker. I think we stared at each other with disbelief for about ten minutes before somebody spoke, but then after that, this, that, we couldn't do this. We can't do this. And so I said, you got, you're gonna have to come back with something that, uh, is realistic. So, and, and, and you guys, you've dealt with health insurance, you, you know what it is. If they think you, they got the advantage on you, then, you know, they'll wait a while. Uh, they came back on March first and said they, Anthem negotiated a proposal of thirty-four percent increase, which amounts to nine hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollar increase a year. So our total premiums would then be three million, eight hundred eighty thousand, three hundred sixty-eight dollars. Or three hundred twenty-three thousand, three sixty-four per month. That's that addition, that's another, that's an additional eighty-two thousand, one hundred sixteen dollars per month. That's not gonna work either. Uh, I'll be honest with you. We can't do that. And, and, and I, I met with all of our people. Donnie, you know, I, I got around to everybody last week, met with them, and faced them. Talk about raise in health insurance. And, and, and Buckingham has treated our, our, our people good. It's one of the highest rates, you know, where we pay. The thing, too, is if you give somebody a five percent raise, which should be a, 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 a good raise. But it's in the neck, on one hand, and you're taking it away on the other hand, because of renewals like this, our, our people would go in the hole. Uh, that's, I, I, I'm, I'm not trying to be belligerent or anything, but this just can't be. So we called our broker back and said, that can't work. So they tried local choice proposal. That was worse than, you know, the, the second option. It, it came back with a forty-seven percent increase, an additional one point three million, which made the premium go up, would, would made it go up to four point two six four million, or three hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-eight dollars per month. Additional one hundred fourteen thousand, nine dollars a month. Can't do that. But we're, we're, we're not giving up. And we are looking, and I hope to have, we, we're in contact with another group. And I, I honestly hope to have something firm, uh, maybe as early as tomorrow, uh, if not the first of the week. I know it's gonna go up. We've had a, a bad experience year. And, but, we gotta be realistic, and, and there's got, there are plans, it's gotta be plans there that we can work with us. So we are hoping for that. We'll be sharing that with you, okay? Keep you all informed. But that's our health insurance, uh, deal as it stands right now. But I, I have not lost faith. We're gonna, we're gonna get something that our people can have and keep, hopefully keep the, the raise. Hope that makes sense. What's next? Okay. We got the expenditure additions. The five percent salary increase for contracted employees, now, this is what, what, with we, we, total. That includes what we get and what we have to put forward, is eight hundred sixty-seven thousand, four hundred fifty dollars. A health insurance, uh, premium, a ten percent increase from the employer, we put in two hundred thirty-two thousand, two thirty-eight. We get ten percent renewal. They'll, they'll put us in a parade or something. Minimum wage increase, non-contracted employees, fifty-three thousand. We, we went up a, a dollar per hour. Tried to get to where, I think we did that last year too, Dylan. So that's what, that's costing. And Wendy talked about a, a security officer. We just felt, I, I feel very strongly about having people around. So we want a security officer located at the middle school and one at the complex, where can watch the primary and elementary at the same time. And that way we keep our SRO up at the high school, and, and, and that, that seems, that's worked really well. The, uh, the alternative education rental fees, uh, thirteen thousand dollars. That's ten thousand, uh, to the county, and three thousand to, uh, Maysville Church. If we're good, they let us shoot basketball at twelve to one on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So, uh, that's what that extra money is on that. So that, they are very good people. I can tell you that right now. Our HVAC contract annual increase, that's Honeywell, uh, is ten thousand dollars. The security officer that's coming off the grant, is that right? Is gonna cost us eight thousand, two hundred dollars. Pick that up. For a grand total of one million, one hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred eighty-eight dollars.
This is the breakdown by area for, um, based on the additional expenditures that Dr. Keeler just discussed, and the reduction of expenditures for our federal grants. We are seeing a reduction in all of our areas, other than debt service. Um, reduction of one million, four hundred forty-four thousand, one hundred seventy dollars in instruction. Reduction of one million, fifty-eight thousand, two hundred eighty-three in administration. Reduction of forty-five thousand, eight sixty-three in pupil transportation. Reduction of sixty-eight thousand, nine fifteen in operations and maintenance. Reduction of eight oh three two ten for facilities. Additional five thousand, fifty-five dollars for debt service, and reduction of seven hundred five thousand, nine hundred fifty-three dollars in technology. Which reduces the reg- regular operation budget by three million, two hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred thirty-nine dollars. And reduce, including our cafeteria addition, three ninety dollars. Total expenditures reduction, three million, two hundred twenty thousand, nine hundred forty-nine dollars. And then Mr. Hesslip is going to discuss our, um, capital projects that are federally funded and where they stand.
I've been watching the page numbers go, and I know I'm starting on twelve, so I'm, I'm. I'd like to say thank you so much to the board for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'd also like to just take a moment and thank Mr. Queen of your maintenance department, uh, helping us with the alternative aid, moving back and forth. I hadn't had a, a whole lot of dealings with him, but he's very, very open and helpful, his whole crew, so I just wanna say thank, thank you for letting us use the art building as well. The first slide shows you two things on the top and the bottom, both of which I think we have discussed before, but if not, I'll give you a brief synopsis. The roof replacement project, um, we have given you a, a briefing on that, but right now that's going really well. I had a meeting with, um, Jamerson Lewis on the sixteenth. Um, we had a, a, a walkthrough pre-construction meeting, talking about staging, when they're probably gonna start that project, which will be mid-April. And ending up in July before school starts. That's the hopeful thing, uh, for the roof, although we all know that weather could play into that. Um, on the bottom, it is the, um, that is a, a vision of what we'd like to see, using our, um, grant money that we would receive to have a new bathroom and concession stand facility at the middle school. It's much needed. I think we have talked about that for a long time. You guys have mentioned it, so is. So now we have funding using the grant, uh, to be able to do that as well. And we are in conversation with our architect now, visioning that, and then hopefully, a lot of the pre-work has already been done with the facilities committee, so these projects can move fast, because we are working off a timeline. Next slide you see is basically the pre-K, what they would receive during this, the HVAC grants. Um, they would receive new units, um, in their, for their school. As well as being switched over to the EBI control system. I'll, I'll brief some synopsis of that in a second. Primary and elementary school would be receiving roof units inside their classroom, HVAC, increased ventilation. Some of those units since the start, um, have given us trouble. We know that a few units were not performing. But now we have the opportunity to replace those and install new units, and take both of these schools, all three of these schools actually, to EBI, which is enterprise building integrations, which helps us to be better with our scheduling. Occupied versus non-occupied helps us be more efficient with our, with our money, our resources as well. And then we'll also, um, have a project with the middle school. As you guys know, thank you so much for giving us the money to do half of that project a few years back. We got a, a new chiller that's been performing so well for us there. We get the opportunity to put in the second unit there. Hopefully we'll duplicate that unit, and then switch the whole building over now to an EBI, which gives us better control of that building. And then lastly, you have the high school and CTE. High school has been running off of, of boilers that use number two heating fuel for quite a long time. We've dodged several bullets on that, um, having problems with, uh, an older unit being with heating fuel, gelling up. Uh, we've dodged those, and luckily the forethought of the facilities committee and Mr. Ivan Davis, my predecessor, there's two propane, um, cutouts already there for upgrading this to a propane building, which would really help the efficiency of this. Uh, and also switching over the high school to completely, yeah, I program. And then lastly, the CTE building, they've been operating with, um, they're out of date, I'm trying to think of the right word, uh, past their expiration date. We've been working those units past their expiration date for quite a while, without a catastrophic fail, which is great. Um, and, and this grant, we would replace all of those, there are twenty-two units, they're older, with a new, um, four-ten, uh, operation, which helps us to be much better. And also put that building on the. We're also looking into, um, just some long-range planning with the facilities committee. Dr. Keeler would be looking with, um, for the auditorium. Uh, we know that that is in some disarray, and it is, it's got such history with the county, with the school, that we would like to see that come back up to its form of glory. Uh, we were working with architectural partners to get, um, an idea of just what it would take to bring that, um, what's the word I'm looking for when you? It's a, basically an outline or a guide for us to start the conversation about what to do with that. Feasibility study, I'm sorry, I couldn't think of it. Any questions for me?
Uh, Dr. Keeler, does that conclude your, you all's presentation? Or anything to add?
No, I think that's it. I, I appreciate JB. We're very fortunate to have him, and, uh, as he pointed out, you know, this project that we're getting ready to start now, it's gonna start in, in a couple of weeks. And should be done July before we get back. That couldn't happen without you all, and, and thank you for that.
Well, Dr. Keeler, thank you and your, uh, staff and team for this presentation, and now it's time for discussion, and, uh, questions regarding the requested budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three, um, operating year with regards to the schools. So, um, questions from our board? Yes, sir, supervisor.
Dr. Keeler, have you heard anything from DOE about virtual Virginia? Are they gonna continue virtual Virginia?
Yes, sir, they are. I don't, Donnie, I don't think it's gonna be as big as it was this past year or the year before that. But they're, you know, we're taking, we gotta take orders in the month of April for slots that we, we think we're gonna have. Presently, we got sixty-six, uh, people going virtual, through virtual Virginia. I expect that to drop. As you know, that's not, that's not real cheap. And, and, uh, uh, basically, it, it, it probably favors the high school, middle school kid more than it does the elementary child. You know, we're hoping we're gonna gain those kids that, uh, right now, I think we actually maybe have twenty-five kids in primary, elementary using it. But I'm hoping we get them back home in, in school. So, um, that's sixty-six. I, I would like to see be down in the high thirties, at least, if, if we got that many. Now, some, like I, I, I do point out, it's not a bad thing, because some kids can take it and run with it. And, and especially if, if they're junior, senior, and they got, they, they know what they're doing, and they get a chance to, to work at the same time. I'm, I'm all for that, especially if it's a field that they wanna get into, get some experience. It can be a really good thing.
I just wanna say, I wanna thank Dr. Keeler and the board for, you've done a good job with your budget. You're not asking for number level funding, and I think that's good. You got a lot of projects going on, and Dr. Keeler, you're doing a good job. Hope that thing work out well with you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Chambers. Any other questions from Supervisor Allen?
Yeah, I'd like to start off saying, Dr. John Keeler, I'm tickled with you. I'm glad that you're there. It's, right now, you're temporary, I think, but they're getting ready to hire somebody new. I'd like to see them hire you. At full-time, because things are going good. And looking better. For the whole county and the schools right now. And so if you keep your, everything is, in my opinion, if y'all would hire him, in my opinion, it would keep things going good. Now, I got something else. Back a while back, I took, come to the board, talking to y'all about transgender and face masks. Face masks are gone now, because it's not a mandate. The mandate part was the biggest problem with me. I don't like to see anybody say you have to wear a mask. So that's all gone, so I ain't wearing it. But the transgender thing, I, I don't know exactly how everything's working out with y'all. I've talked to some people to say that transgender will take them to this bathroom, one bathroom. But the idea with some of the people in the public and all with me, too, is that if I'm a boy, I walk down the hall and I say, hey, I'm a girl today. I get to go to the girls' restroom. I just wanna make sure that y'all don't have that set up. So that the people, some of the people in the county think you do. It's so you don't have it set up, and people know that.
You know, uh, I'm glad you asked that question, because a transgender child, we wanna involve the family with this thing. This, this is, uh, I, I take it as a serious thing, because it doesn't mean that that child wanted, wanted to be a transgender. It, it's that how we can we make him, her, whatever they're identifying as, as a part of our staff, or, or, or school. But it takes the family to be in there with us. And, uh, I want to, I want to make sure that we have accommodations that don't offend anybody. If, if that means it's gonna be in the, the office, special restroom, or, or wherever. You know, it's, this thing is pretty much just common sense sometimes. But I want the family to be included. It's not one of these things, you just take this kid in and say, alright, you're gonna do this, and you're gonna do that. I, I'm not aware of any, but if it comes to my, to my office, that's, that's the approach that I'm gonna take. It's hard to say that I'm gonna make him go to the gym bathroom, or her, go here. And I'm not, uh, and, and I'm not for, uh, anybody being harassed. The kids that are or are not. And, uh, you know, we're a public school. I, I'm a, I am a big fan of public schools. I'm a, I am a big fan of public schools. I think it's one of the building blocks of democracy. Because we teach everybody, everybody that comes to our door, we're gonna find a place for them. And, and in this, it's a good question. I just want you all to rest assured, when and if it does happen, we're gonna handle it the best way we can, for everybody.
And I see it as two different things too. One is if you're born that way, is a totally different issue than if it's, you walk down the street and say, I'm gonna change today, that's the difference, that's the thing. The other thing I'm talking about now is, I see the limousine bus at the school. And what are they using that for now? It's a limousine bus that comes to the school?
That the Boys and Girls Club?
Boys and Girls Club, okay, cool, I just didn't know, I just wanted to check it out. And one more thing.
Yes, sir Supervisor Allen.
I ain't finished yet. There was a question that came up a while back. They're selling some land in between the two schools, the high school and the middle school. And I don't know if somebody had said something to y'all to bury it, but I think it would be a good thing to buy that land in between. If you, if you want to, let me know, and we could probably get in the middle of that and help you.
Does the house go with it?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
The house goes with it, I think the trailer goes with it, but you...
That's what I wanted to raise on the meeting, I think it's a good investment if the school went bad.
And it's, isn't it nine acres?
I think it was. I think it connects it both schools together.
I think, I've looked at that a lot. I was wondering, is there any way that it would join our property from the high school and connect it to the middle school?
Looking at the map, connecting it to the school bus shop. Want it running? It won't? What's between that and the school bus from a, from a, how's he talking about down on the road?
Hillberry.
Right, what lane in between the school and the county, I mean? Right. But that's what I'm saying, if you purchase that, will that give the county control, everything from a... That's what I'm saying, yeah. Right, right. Yeah, if you purchase left-hand side, it'll give you all the way to the bus garage, what I'm saying. I think it'd be a good investment.
If that's so, if that's so, is it room enough to someday wanna build something on it? Do that. Nine acres, y'all would be able to build something on it. You gotta think ahead.
Build a new high school one day.
If you're gonna do it, I think that that going house is a nice house, looks like to me. I was peeking at it through the baseball game, you know, you said over there about, right there with boys, and you can look. That thing's bigger, but I think he was asking three hundred and fifty thousand, does that sound right? With the house?
He came down a little bit since then. I think, I ain't sure, go ahead.
But aren't there two other houses still on that backside on sixteen? Yes, I mean, it wouldn't be totally ours, and we'd still be adjoining up behind person, you know, private citizens. So, I mean, but I think that's something that the board probably should also discuss to see if that's some... I mean, we kinda have discussed it. But, you know, I think as a board, we probably need to discuss that a little bit more in detail to see for futuristic purposes what we could use it for.
Does anyone have any other questions for Dr. Keeler or the school board?
Yes, sir. I'm saying that because one day you're gonna have to build a new high school. It's coming, it's coming. And so you already had that lane, you know.
Yeah, I've said that, I've said that for years. It's not gonna be tomorrow, but, you know. Looking long-term, we're eventually gonna have to do that. So, you know, it would be nice to have that land in between, because we put so much money in the football field and the track that we really wouldn't have to move it there, if we could kinda shift it a little bit. It would, like you said, Sherry, it would be terrible for the people living on the backside, but, you know, have a high school right there in their backyard, but if it came down to that.
Yeah, they got one pretty close to them anyway. It'd be just a little closer.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir Supervisor Brian.
Uh, this one's for Ronnie. Ronnie, buses, I know everything else in the world is going up. Okay, I mean, hearing the budget increases, you know, from that insurance, what are we looking like for school buses now?
Buses now are ten thousand dollars, still in the ninety thousand dollar range.
Okay, so we're still good there?
Yes, I'm a little bit higher than what we usually get.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions before we turn it back over to the school board?
But you still can get three buses for two seventy. Does that condition go all the way from the front to the back? Cool.
Sounds like a chilly ride.
It'd be a different ride.
Well, some of those kids got asthma and stuff, they need to be in the cool place.
Someone wants to get off the bus. Someone wanna stay on the bus.
Any other discussion, gentlemen, before we turn it back over to the school board?
I've got something, Mr. Matthews.
Yes, sir Supervisor Matthews, yes, sir.
I'd just like to tell the superintendent, this is the first time in my seven years on the board that they've come close, even come close to local funding. And I do have some other questions. My definition of local funding is not really the same as what you're saying it is, but you are making a move in the right direction, and I do appreciate that. And I know the citizens do, taxpayers do, so thank you so much, appreciate it.
Want to continue or?
That's it.
Okay. Anyone else? Other questions before we turn it back over to the school board? Okay, seeing none, Madam Chairman.
Thank you Chairman Miles, and we thank you all for listening to our budget, and hopefully we will see what the governor's budget will provide us, we're hoping.
Good luck.
Thank you all, and we are adjourned.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
And we're gonna pause just really briefly, we're not gonna go anywhere, so we can continue as the school board exits. Twenty-two, twenty-three budget and tax rate. So, Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Miles. I prepared for you guys a, kind of a guidebook or like a cheat sheet to highlight items of the budget, so we don't have to go through the whole thing, you know, line by line, but I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have. If you want me to, I can go through and start and just go through some highlights right off the bat, and that way it might answer some of your questions.
That's what the board desires, and you all wanna go through some highlights, gentlemen?
Will you, at the public hearing, will you go through every item at the public hearing, won't you?
I would do a PowerPoint presentation, I mean, I can include what you guys want, but I normally don't go through every item for the public hearing, no.
Okay.
So how about some highlights?
Okay, all right, well, I'll start with, I almost got that bad chair, my, just went down.
Oh, you got the bad chair?
I think I did, it just went down.
Good, you stole my seat anyway.
I'll start off with this, this budget is no tax increase, so hopefully that'll satisfy a lot of your constituents, that we're not raising, proposing to raise any taxes right now. You will see the total budget as a decrease of about four million dollars from last year. And that decrease is due to those ARPA funds that we did not get this year, we got in the current year. So that was about three point three million. We got another one point five million from Dominion Grant. So with those two not being in this budget this year, that's why you see the overall decrease in the budget. This budget does include a rate increase for our health insurance, so we're nowhere near with the school gap, but ours was five point six percent health increase. We're nowhere near the double digits like they were, so thank goodness for that for us this year.
How about giving them, how about giving them that company's telephone number so they can call?
Yeah, I've never heard of that kind of increase, but, yeah, that's amazing. It also comes along with a one point seven eight increase in our retirement rate. This budget also includes a five percent proposed salary increase to match what the state is doing. As in the past, we normally do our, give our employees what the state's suggesting for their employees, so the state's suggesting five percent, we're gonna try to do it for our employees as well. The school has told you they're not asking for an increase this year. Something different this year due to those ARPA funds we do have. I've taken out all the vehicle requests this year to help us balance the budget, assuming that we got those ARPA funds, we use those one-time funds to make those one-time purchases, so that won't cost a taxpayer any money, it'll be used for those grant funds, so that'll help save on our expenses and keep your rates down where you want them to be at. On your budget sheet, you'll see there's an unassigned fund balance of two hundred and sixty-nine dollars, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand and seventy-four dollars. This is what you have left, and this is what the money you have to, I would say, play with. If you wanna add anything, it'll decrease that number. If you take anything out, it'll increase that number. So, that's your house money you have to play with and decide what you wanna add to this budget or take out of this budget. Also, as Dr. Keeler said, our constitutional officers do not have their final budgets from the state yet. So what I've done in this budget is put in what they got last year, because I didn't wanna change it and guess on it, and then they get their budget and you have to change it again. So, I just have it with their, got this current year. So hopefully, when they get their budget, those number will increase, and will also increase that two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. I've highlighted some new requests we had that came to our board last week and spoke to you guys. The Boys and Girls Club came and requested ten thousand dollars. LLC Family Services requested sixty thousand dollars. And the library had came and, I mean, Mr. Ricky Ewing had made his proposal, and at the time, I think Supervisor Miles asked him was the total amount he was requesting, and he didn't have it that night. But he did bring it to our office on Monday, and if I did my math right, he's asking for additional eleven thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars above without including in this budget.
So you want motions on these three right now, one at a time?
We're doing it at the end, after I do all the discussions.
Let Mr. Carter finish first, please.
He wants to go through the whole budget, then if we have questions?
Oh, you're saying it one time, yes, sir.
What was your question Supervisor Matthews, I didn't hear you.
Just when he finishes his presentation, we'll have, if you have any questions.
We'll have a discussion on what you guys wanna add. The other thing you had new to consider this year is new positions. The victim witness position, that grant has been around for probably about five years, and that position is fully funded by our grant, so we pay no local funds to that grant at all, for that position. The downside of that is, she's been in that position for six years, and because it's fully grant-funded, she doesn't qualify for pay increases when we get them. So this five percent that you guys are proposing for us, she will not get that because she's totally funded by the grant. She's asked to be supplemented with, by the county, so like your deputies, that, you know, they're comp board position, but we supplement their salary, so let's say the comp boards pays forty thousand. You might have a deputy making fifty, so the county's paying that additional ten.
What position is this, what is?
It's the victim witness, it works down with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office.
Okay.
The registrar is asking for a full-time position. She currently has three part-time positions, but wants to reorganize and do some reshuffling to have a full-time position. As you all know, election procedures and rules have increased a lot the last few years. I've checked with other surrounding counties, and most of them all have a registrar that has a full-time position. So she is unique in the fact that she does not have any full-time staff at all. Commonwealth Attorney has also requested a new position, but his position fortunately is a comp board position. So, I did not include that in this budget, but if he does get that position, we can add it later, because that will be funded by the comp board, so it shouldn't cost the county any money if they do that, unless he increases the salary above what the comp board's providing. Some other highlights, on page four thirteen, personal property tax. That's something we need to talk about. As you know, Kim, can you help me with this for a second? All right, personal property taxes, mainly vehicles. As you know, if you go buy any car lot right now, vehicles are in high demand. I've had another discussion with surrounding counties, and it's going across the country. Everybody's having values increase. When people get their personal property tax bill, normally if you have a vehicle, you're almost guaranteed that you pay less in taxes the next year because the value went down. Well, because values of vehicles are so valuable right now, the values are actually going up on used vehicles. So, so when you get, when your constituents get their tax bills, a lot of them are gonna have a higher tax bill for their vehicle than they had last year. So I'm preparing you, because you're probably gonna get some phone calls about why their, why their values are going up.
But there was, wasn't there a bill proposed, wasn't there a bill proposed at the state level? Was that stuff not, I mean, how can they inflate a used car? That's at the dealership, that's not my personal vehicle.
It's not the dealership, it's the, they use the NADA book value. And that's what that value, they get those values from that.
Right now, used cars are up forty percent.
But that's ridiculous, we don't have any control over that, I mean, that's the whole thing.
Right.
We have no control over it, and it's the...
You do not have any control, you're right about that, Mr. Matthews.
We need to make that known, that we have no control over this, it's...
Right, because it's the value, it's not the rate going up, it's the value of the vehicle.
Well, I'd like to see that bill that they just passed, to, they talked about reducing that rate.
Talking about it, but I don't know if they'll pay it.
I've heard it has passed, but anyway.
I think that was a senate bill Supervisor Matthews, is that right?
It was, I've got it somewhere, but anyway, somebody sent me some information on that that was complaining about it already.
They say you're getting ready to sell your car, you can sell it for more than what you paid for.
That's what they always say, but it never works out that way for me.
Someone hit a pickup that was two years old, and he carried it to the dealer to have it serviced. They gave him six thousand dollars more than he paid for it.
Isn't that crazy?
Any other discussion on that personal property tax, gentlemen, before we move on?
What would you do, I said sign the title.
Kevin's gonna pass out to you a worksheet.
Yeah.
Okay.
They'll pay you more than what you paid for it.
While Kevin passing out that worksheet, the Commissioners Office is trying to get this information out, so when people come in, she has a letter she's giving them explaining how this increases. So, when people come in, she has a letter she's giving them explaining how this increase is gonna incur. And hopefully, it can calm them when they get this.
Gentlemen?
Yeah, good luck with that.
Thank you, sir.
I got a problem with some of the personal property tax. I need to, been chewing at my butt for a few years, and I just wanna say something about it tonight. Okay, you can own a camper in Buckingham and eat you alive, but you can own an airplane in Buckingham and you ain't got a Harley plate, nothing, now.
Amen.
Hold up more beer.
Let me, let me call Morgan Dunham and see. Let him enlighten you on that deal.
All right, guys. So, what, so what, so these handouts, Mr. Carter?
On the packets that Kevin just passed out to you, you should see two, one of the newest articles that the Commissioner's passing out to people.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, please, we have kind of a hard time hearing.
The other is a letter she's giving to all customers trying to explain what, how their values are going up. The third piece of information you have is a Excel sheet. It's got a, a list of vehicles on it that look similar to this. Yes. All right. So, what we tried to do is give you some examples of classes on these vehicles that have their values going up. So, the first block you'll see under the first line on the first page at the very top, those are your simp, and she just picked some random vehicles. So, it's not all the vehicles in the county, just random selection. Those vehicles are semi-trucks. So, the first two columns, you'll see last year's value and the last year's taxes they paid. If you go to the far right, you'll see a column highlighted in gray with, with orange writing. That's gonna be the new column she's gonna use for twenty-two, twenty-three. So, for that freight line on the very top, you can see last year on the far left, they paid three thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. This upcoming year, she's gonna use the clean loan column instead of the clean, clean trade value like she did in the past. And so, that one, that vehicle will go down, so I picked the bad one to start off with.
Why did that one go down?
It's just the way that NADA book value chart listed. Let's see.
Because diesel fuel five dollars a gallon.
Free going. Yeah. Well, that's true, too.
Well, if you look at the last one, a Western conventional, that value they paid last year was twenty-three, forty-nine. They're gonna pay twenty-four, sixty this year. So, that one didn't increase that much. But let's see, if you scroll down to the next section with the passenger vehicles, I'll pick one like. All right. I'm gonna turn to the second page, and when you get to the Hondas, there's a Honda Accord two thousand and thirteen, the very first one.
I got a oh-nine. Can you get that on this list?
I don't think so.
Yeah, it's yours. You'll see that Honda Accord two thousand and thirteen, last year, the value of that vehicle was eighty-six hundred dollars. If you follow that all the way across, the value is now going to ten thousand two hundred dollars. So, that value has increased, thus making their taxes go to four hundred and thirteen dollars and ten cent compared to three hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty cent this current year.
A lot of complaint.
So, you're gonna have a lot of vehicles like that where their taxes are gonna go up compared to last year.
Yes, sir. Supervisor.
I got a question for you.
All right. Supervisor Matthews and Supervisor Allen.
What about if you have, is in the, the high mileage rate still a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, you still, you still get those discounts?
So, you can still use that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. What have they up that amount? Or what, what is the fee? I mean, what is that? That should be, that should go up with the, with this whole situation here then? Or come down some, I would think, maybe?
I'll check with the Commissioner on that, but I don't think she's changing the discount rate. I think if they still get a discount, I don't know how she does that discount.
Who sets that rate would, or whether it would come down or not?
The Commissioner revenue.
Okay, so, okay.
So, under her discretion?
Yes. And that's why we're doing here with these, changing the column she chooses. She can do that without you guys having to do any public hearing motions or anything.
What about, what about, I mean, I, I know how they get the arrive at the value with the Kelly Blue Book values. But can she not adjust that rate? I mean, why can't she have something to do with that?
She, she can't change.
She is doing it on this clean loan back.
That's right. She's doing it by value, and in order to change the rate, you guys gotta do that. And so, with the surrounding counters are thinking, you probably don't want to get to change your rate because suppose they change next year, you'll be changing the rate again. So, she thinks it's easier by just changing the value you go by instead of the rate.
Would your buy still present? Gas prices still be up?
Supervisor Allen, you have.
Well, I was just wondering, is this totally in the budget for the big change? You said two hundred thousand. That's, what do you think, gonna get extra?
I put that in there. I mean, it could go more than that, but I was just being conservative because she used the lowest column she can use. She tried to help the taxpayer as much as she can. Because you can see that clean trade value is still pretty high as well in that average trade.
How about a Tesla? Have you got that on there?
I don't think she picked those.
Probably one in the county.
But that's what this sheet is showing, just a random sample of vehicles. And you can see those two columns on what the person's paying currently and what they'll be paying next year. And you can see on all of the values that are going up.
Yes, sir. Vice Chairman Chambers has a question for you, Mr. Carter.
I, I'm not trying to be funny. I got quite a few comments, I mean, complaints about them buggers on the road. They want to make them put kennetakes on them, they turning the highways up and stuff. I told them, I don't know, you know.
Doesn't have a motor in it, no. It's gotta have a motor to be taxed.
Where that gas going? I'll give me one. But they want to know.
All right. So, that's.
If they want to know, I'm gonna.
Have rubber wheels.
Got to have rubber wheels. Okay.
Number three, did we want to continue, Mr. Carter, or?
Yes, sir. I'll keep going.
Okay.
Let's see, what's another one to pick out?
Go to the front page, Carl. The third from the bottom, the twenty nineteen Ford F- one fifty.
The third page, you said? I'm sorry?
No, first page.
Okay.
Yours is a two fifty.
Twenty nineteen Ford F- one.
Third from the bottom.
Okay.
I guess this year they'd have paid thirteen thirty-five forty-nine.
Yes, sir.
Next year, they would have paid sixteen thirty-seven twenty-one, but if we go with clean loan value, then it's only gonna go up to fourteen seventy-four.
That's exactly right. That's how you read it. Yeah.
Yep. So, I mean.
She's picking the lowest column she can to.
Right.
This is good tool.
So, she's trying to keep it reasonable.
That's right.
But.
The values are going up so much, it's.
Yeah. They, they're skyrocketing.
Not reasonable anyway. You shouldn't even have a car tax. You don't pay your tax on it once in a while when you bought the dad thing.
Yeah. So, this is some good information for your constituents, because I mean, we're trying to help them as much as we can. But you will get some calls on this.
I know we're gonna get some calls.
Oh, you can guarantee that.
Any more questions about that before we move on? Because I know that's a hot topic, and it's gonna stay a hot topic, so.
Let's get Mr. Gilmore back as good.
Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir. Let's see, I'm trying to go through some other ones that. Permits and licenses on page five of thirteen, we increased that a little bit. Remember, you decided last week to charge the twenty-five dollars for solid waste stickers, so we should see some increase revenue in that.
Hit your call.
Well, let's make, let's make.
Page, page five of thirteen.
In your little guidebook.
Yeah. Make a little speech about that, what we talked about today, Carl, on, I mean, let's make a little analogy on, on the twenty-five dollars. Let's talk about that.
The twenty-five dollars, once again, you guys made annually. So, somebody comes in who's a non-resident, owns Land County, they pay twenty-five dollars for that solid waste sticker. Paying twenty-five dollars for that sticker gives them access whatever X amount of times a day. They can go ten times a day to dump their trash. They can go a thousand times in a week. They can go a million times in a year. They can go as many times as they want, and they're paying that twenty-five dollar fee. Also, they can tear down their home. They can use those roll-offs. So, they remodeling their house. They can take lumber. They can do all this kind of stuff just for that simple twenty-five dollar fee. So, I don't think it's a lot to ask those people to pay for that because that's us annual service that you can use as many times as you want.
Right.
It costs you two dollars a month.
Two dollars a month.
Two dollars a month. That's what it costs. I think that's a pretty doggone good deal.
It's a pretty good deal.
I don't see why anybody should complain about that, really.
All right. Which page you're on, Mr. Carter?
I'm just going through and trying to pick out some highlights. Let me go to page six of thirteen when you get to the expenses. At the very bottom, it says page forty-two, Emergency Services. I have some typos in it. The spell check must have corrected for me, or I just typed in the wrong word. But you'll see down toward the middle says, now that Medicare and Medicaid are part of our insurance reimbursements, we are not seeing the revenue recovery pick up in coming good months. That should say now instead of not. So, my spell check must have changed that to not, but it should say we are now seeing revenue recovery pick up and come in in good amounts. So, and then at the next sentence, as of end of February, we have received, and that was a little placeholder for me to check my information when I got in on Monday, and I got to check it before I put this booklet out. So, as of February, we have received three hundred and eighty-five thousand in revenue recovery. And which is, you know, we just started this back in August, September, so it hasn't been a twelve-month period. We just got the Medicare, Medicaid going, so we're doing pretty good on that. As of Monday, when I checked this, we had kept to four hundred and twenty-six thousand in revenue recovery. So, we're seeing that come in pretty good, so hopefully, that'll continue, and that'll help, you know, put off that general fund kicking into fund Emergencies, EMS. Debt service, that's a now hot topic your constituents want to always ask about. That went up a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, about a hundred and sixty-one thousand if you round it up.
What page is that on?
Page seven thirteen.
Page seven thirteen, I'm sorry.
And then about top of the page.
Yeah. Page number fifty-three.
Okay.
So, we did some refinancing, and that debt service hopefully doesn't change much. We try, when they refinance it, they look at our loans, our payments, and they try to smooth it out. So, they look at months, years that we have a lot, they don't put that much toward it. Years we have a decrease, they add that, so it kind of stays smooth. So, you shouldn't see up and down flows in our debt service payments. Page fifty-six, the IDA fund. That's two things in that right now. We got that hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar payment for the sewer, new sewer plant. And then something new this year. Remember, we chose to abate the in-house pharmacy for the purchase of Gold Hill, their taxes. So, remember, we were gonna follow that through the IDA, so when they pay their taxes, we give them a credit for the first five years. So, that's that twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars for that. That's kind of the main highlights. I mean, I was hoping tonight we can get through and talk about those new requests, because once again, me and Mr. Hickman do not add new requests to the budget. We get your direction from you guys on what do you want to do about those.
So, if you all would, and thank you for that, Mr. Carter. So, if you all would flip to page three of thirteen in terms of the three new requests and the, that we have before us. As you see, Boys and Girls Club, ten thousand dollars. LOC Family Services, sixty thousand dollars. And the library, twenty thousand. And my understanding, Mr. Carter, from the library, is that twenty thousand only covers their minimum wage increase. Is that correct, sir?
But I just gave you that number earlier that I.
That's back down to twelve, man.
Eleven thousand something dollars, eleven thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars, so.
Thousand nine.
Nine forty-nine.
Nine, okay. So, those are the three new requests that we need to consider to potentially add in the budget.
Well, that Boys and Girls Club is a great thing for the county. I think we should get that ten thousand dollars.
I agree.
Make a motion.
I'm, I'm making a motion.
I second.
Okay. Motion by Vice Chairman Chambers, second by Supervisor Allen to include and new money, ten thousand dollars for the Boys and Girls Club into the budget. Any discussion before we vote?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Supervisor Matthews. Sure.
What, what is the ten thousand dollars paying for? What is that? I mean.
That's their travel.
What did we do last year for the Boys and Girls Club?
We've never given them.
Never done anything. This is new. Okay. So, why is, why are they coming to us this year for the ten thousand dollars? Where were they getting that money before they came to us?
They're footing the bill themselves right now.
That's what she said overnight.
Yeah, I remember.
That limousine service, they're paying for their own pocket right now.
So, now she wants us to pay for it?
Right. She wants somebody to pay some of those services.
A few years ago, the school division paid for the gas to go to, from here to.
They were using their bus. They were using their buses, yes.
Using their buses, okay. What was reason they discontinued that?
I don't know why. I'm guessing it's a driver shortage, like everybody else is having.
Aren't those, aren't those enrichment plans helping the school division that they're doing over at the Boys and Girls Club?
Oh, she raised her hand.
But, miss, yeah, hold, hold, or miss, yes, ma'am, Miss Oliver. Sorry. Does that help answer your question?
She said she was servicing a lot of, I mean, about twenty-some kids from Buckingham. So, you know.
That's why she said during the presentation.
Well, they must be picking them up at the school then if there's, if you saw a limousine up there. So, you're not servicing all those children, right? I mean, is that correct? From Scottsville.
Scottsville, yeah.
About twenty-six students from the, from Buckingham do use the Boys and Girls Club, so.
That's what she was saying overnight.
Yes, sir. Yeah. So, there's a motion on the floor. Any more discussion? Are we gonna use our hands, Mr. Lynn? Or we can use the board? Okay. So, the motion by Vice Chairman Chambers, second by Supervisor Allen. So, please hit the buttons if you would, please. Okay.
Mr. Allen.
Gotcha.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. All in favor, record your vote aye. Those no. It's unanimous. Thank you. So, just going down the list, next would be sixty thousand dollars for LOC Family Services. And we're gonna clear the board so we can make motions and vote. So, is there any discussion on that or any motions?
She put in her presentation that she's federally funded. I, I can't see us putting any local money towards that.
Do you have a motion, Supervisor?
No, sir. I'll just let it die.
Okay. So, we won't take any action on that? Is that, what you all's feeling?
That's a consensus of the board.
Okay. Moving next will be library, and that's eleven thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars.
I will say something about this.
Yes, sir. Ms. Matthews.
Mr. Carter and Mr. Chambers are on that library committee with myself and Mr. Wright. And I think I've actually personally talked to Mr. Ewing, and so did Mr. Chambers, and I think you did too.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Miles. And total originally was up, up over forty thousand dollars because they were trying to get into VRS. Now, this is a lot more realistic number, but that facility has really brought a lot to our county over the last couple of years since we've completed it. So, you know, Mr. Ewing is always willing to work with us, and we're trying to do the best we can. We don't have a lot of extra money to throw, throw around, so I think he's gonna try to bite the bullet on this. But we're trying to get some of those people that are part-time individuals up to where they need to be.
Minimum wage, yeah.
I'm, I'm for this, and I will make a motion to approve this.
All right. There's a motion by Supervisor Matthews, second by Supervisor Brian to allocate this eleven thousand nine forty-nine for the library. All those in favor, please record your vote aye. Those no. And it's unanimous. So, those two are taken care of. And Mr. Carter, we need to take action on the two positions with victim witness and registrar, Commonwealth Attorney. We do not need to act on, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I have one, too.
Yes, sir. Mr. Matthews.
Okay. I know it's from the comp board that this is being funded by, and the ten thousand three hundred and forty dollars is not funded by the comp board because that's a raise, right? And she's been there how many years?
Six.
Six years. So, if you were out in the general public and you were gonna get a raise, has the state employees gotten a cost of living raise over the last six years every year? Or when it, how much does that?
My question kind of goes to what you're asking, Don.
Okay.
Sir, Mr. Brian.
I'm just curious.
You know, I am too.
I'm not trying to be tight.
How much of it is actually a raise, and how much of it is going to VRS and other services?
I can speak on that. So, out of that ten thousand, that actually includes a new laptop for her that would probably account for two to three thousand as well. Part of that raise is, I believe, another three or four thousand, and then that would just bring her salary up three or four thousand. Then the laptop, then office supplies, and all that other stuff. I have a breakdown of that, of what she added, if y'all would like as well.
Oh, that is included in the ten thousand, what you're talking about?
Correct.
Oh, okay. That makes a difference, yeah.
Yes, it's not ten thousand directly to her salary, no.
Mr. Matthews, is it?
Well, yeah. I mean, I'm just curious. Does our IT department have a budget that they can get laptops for, or is that, this is set, something set, what, how does that work? I'm just curious.
Mr. Carter?
Each department pays for their own computers and stuff, so, yeah, IT doesn't pay for it.
So, this is, it's own comp board stuff, but that's out of Kemper Beasley's or the Commonwealth Attorney's?
She has her own department. There's a victim witness.
This is her own department, okay. She's only one person in that department? Okay.
Any more questions? Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Hickman. That, that helps explain what, what we were, what, what the supervisors were asking. Thank you. Okay. So.
When are you talking about your victim witness?
Yes, sir. Supervisor Allen?
Y'all gonna make a motion on it?
I'm just, I would entertain a motion.
I, I move that, that we go ahead and approve it, Ms. Chairman, based on not all of this is a pay raise. She has not received a pay raise in six years, and, and I do know the work that she does for the people in that office, and it is, it is tremendous work. So, yeah, I, I move that, that we go ahead and approve it.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Brown and seconded by Mr. Davis to approve the victim witness position. All in favor, please record your vote aye. Those no. Motion is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, the next and last position is with regards to the county registrar. That's an additional full-time position, and I have a question for Mr. Carter on that. So she's got three individuals, Ms. Taylor does, who are part-time right now. Their hours would assumingly go down right much once this new person comes in, right?
Yes, sir. She um, because when she did her budget request, she did drastically reduce her part-time salaries and increased to full-time.
What did she, what, what did she reduce and what amount was that, you know?
Uh, yeah, I can tell you.
Our time went from thirty thousand to eighteen thousand.
Oh, that's pretty significant.
Well, I think you need a second person in there because just one person there, so she gets sick or something, uh, got to go out on maternity leave or something like that, you're gonna have to run the office.
Right. She talks about that in her request that if she's out for any extended period of time, she has nobody else that has the training that she has that can fill in for.
I make a motion that we accept a new full-time position in the registrar's office.
Motion by Supervisor Allen, seconded by Supervisor Bryant to um go with the registrar's request for forty thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you for that. All in favor, please record your vote aye, those opposed no. The vote is unanimous, thank you. All right, so Mr. Carter, does that complete action on new items we need to consider?
Yes, sir, and I might get my calculator out and, and uh tell you what that new undersigned fund balance is after we make these changes.
Let me make something else too.
Yes, sir.
Hundred ninety-six thousand thirty.
Supervisor Matthews.
Sorry, Carl. I mean, you've gotten me into the, you've gotten me into the numbers, so.
The Commonwealth Attorney's Office, uh, I'd like to go with the recommendation from Mr. Carter. We don't fund this until they actually make the hire, so let's make sure.
So no action on that?
Yes.
Okay. So that being the case, um, under E two. Mm-hmm, uh, discussion, I'm sorry, consideration of approval of a proposed budget for tax rates and advertisement for the proposed budget as discussed for a public hearing on Monday, April the eighteenth, and this is a change in our, uh, from our normal uh budget calendar. So um unless anyone has any other questions on the budget, yes, sir, Supervisor Bryant.
Um, I have really two questions. Um, I know that we had talked about looking at page twelve of thirteen.
Okay.
We had talked about uh the Gene Dixon Park, uh, of getting Todd to start advertising for bids for the lights and stuff. Um, how's that going?
I've talked to Todd. Uh, he explained to me why he has put on pause, and I'll be glad to talk to you about it after, but he's, he had a reason why he had stopped doing stuff.
Okay, okay.
He's been told to go and start that up again.
Okay, um.
What was that, Supervisor Allen? I'm sorry, I didn't. The dog pound.
Oh, the animal control facility.
We increased that number up to one million dollars. Uh, yeah, that's on page thirteen of thirteen. We had seven hundred and thirty in there, so it's an increase of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and that's just based on construction costs. Now, we got a feeling, I mean, we're knowing we bid it out, we're actually know it's gonna be, but based on talking to surrounding counties and with construction costs, that we think that's gonna be closer to a million dollars now instead of the seven hundred and thirty.
Any other questions?
How much do we have left in ARPA funds?
We've, we've only committed ha- that one point five for a firefly, so we got, we got three point three, so the remainder is that.
About three point four-ish, just.
You know, I know it's, in, in the past, it's been, it's been a serious issue with the radio coverage, and it's probably about time to start looking at radio upgrades. Can we use maybe some ARPA funds for that?
If we show a negative balance, we can.
Uh, I've talked to some of you about that. Some of the rules on the ARPA spend has been relaxed, so you can declare lost revenue, and then once you do that, you can use those funds on normal government activity.
Okay.
But Supervisor Bryant, we can take that to the ARPA committee that we've got as well for with regards to radio.
Uh, look at, you know, I know that uh, I know we committed one point three to the Gene Dixon Park Reserve, uh, you know, for that, but with the skyrocketing prices of everything else, you know, I, you know, that's why I'm kind of getting back into the swing of things, because if, if we can use ARPA funds for this, then by all means, we need to use them, because I, I told you before, I don't want to give the federal government back a dime.
And it only makes sense because it's one-time fund, use a one-time project.
Right, and, and this is a good example of it. But thank you for looking at the, the ambulance and, and the other things for ARPA funds as well, so.
And we have until twenty twenty-four, Mr. Carter, is that right? Okay.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Supervisor Davis.
Um, I'm reading this correctly, Carl. Is this on forty-two, which emergency services, that for the ambulance service for the county, that is a decrease of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars that come from the recoup of the Medicare and stuff like that, where you're projecting the increase?
Um.
Page six of thirteen.
Oh, six, I was looking at twelve.
Was that the money used in between last year and now?
I think that's grant money.
That's, what that decrease is, that was that one point five million that Dominion gave us, so that's what we're spending it down to. So we're saying we've spent four hundred and fifty-nine thousand of it. So it's just a decrease in that Dominion money, that one point five.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion to consider approval and advertise the budget?
And advertise with the changes that.
Yes, advertise with changes as amended, I should say.
One more, we got one more question.
Yes, sir.
We had in, uh, let me see. Last April, somebody, uh, was it Roy Jenkins came here talking about the logging thing? What's the latest on that? I mean, we had a committee for it, did, did I know?
I think.
Bottom line?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you, enlighten you a little bit on that. We talked to him on a couple, a couple of different occasions, the full committee, and had some questions on uh if they had any ideas how we could recoup that lost revenue, and we haven't heard anything since.
Yeah, Supervisor Allen, um, the finance committee asked him numerous questions and one of which includes what Mr. Matthews said, we never heard back.
He heard nothing back?
Not on the questions. We did not hear back anything on the questions. Is that right, Mr. Carter?
Today. So I reached out to him today again, and he sent me an email. I can forge that email, but.
Okay, if you could send that to all of us, please. Okay. So there is a motion, yes, sir.
I move that we go ahead and advertise the proposed rate with the changes that we've made. Real estate would be fifty-two cents, public service corporation fifty-two cents, the personal property four oh five, and that's with the change from the commissioner of revenue. That, the state corporation commissioned that four oh five, personal property of four oh five, machinery and tools at two dollars and ninety, merchants' capital at a dollar, and aircraft at fifty-five cents.
All right, and there's a second from Supervisor Matthews, and it was uh moved by Supervisor Bryant, seconded by Matthews. Any questions before we vote? All in favor, please record your vote aye, those opposed no. Supervisor Davis. And the motion is unanimous. Uh, but thank you for that. Before we go, item F, we do have three items for consideration. One, F one, consider change the date of the Dr. Carter G. Woodson Day from April the second to April the third. And I see there's already a motion on, well, excuse, not yet. There we go. Motion by Supervisor Chambers, and is there a second? Second by Supervisor Davis. All in favor, please.
What is April second?
That's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday.
Saturday.
It's a Saturday. Isn't that tire day?
No, tire day was.
Six, sixteen?
Okay, okay.
Somebody have some, something up there, Wayside, isn't it?
That's where it is.
It's at the Wayside, right?
Yeah, yeah. At Lee Wayside.
All right, those in favor, please record your vote aye. It's unanimous, thank you. The next item, and there's a letter um on your desk regarding this, under zoning matters, F two, consider request for a six-month extension um for case twenty-one SUP two-eight-nine for a special use permit for CERL for a cell tower at one-two-nine-nine-four Howardsville Road.
Have we ever extended that?
This is the first extension in my discussion with Ms. Edmiston. Is, is that, this is the first extension to this project. There have been supply troubles is from what Ms. Edmiston said, getting the parts to actually get going.
Supply chains got them held up.
All right, motion by Mr. Bryant, seconded by Mr. Davis to grant this. All in favor, please record your vote aye, those opposed no. And it's unanimous. And F three, Mr. Davis, EMS, consider appropriation of Apex Grant. So, Mr. Davis, if you could please briefly address this if you would.
Briefly? And I do appreciate y'all letting me in on this kind of special meeting just to get this taken care of. It's something I'm pretty excited about, so I did want to kind of give you the full spiel on it. Um, you guys know that I try to run the uh department that you've put me in charge of with a very twenty-first century mindset, which is a, a big part of that is operational readiness, which uh physical fitness and, and health and wellness of our people, I think, is a, as a goal for that, and something that I try to strive to push. Um, however, our resources are limited to, to do that as it stands currently. So uh we have been exploring options for some time. Actually had applied to a grant through FEMA for um funds to build out a, a gym within our station that would be open to all public safety and county official personnel, and the grant was not funded. So I worked, you know, was letting our EMS committee know about it, our merchant services committee know about it, and uh Supervisor Matthews proposed the idea that we uh tried to see what Apex might be able to do with it. So some conversation with them, you know, they felt strongly that uh they wanted to support that kind of operational readiness notion uh countywide for our public safety folks, fire EMS law, county officials, county administration. Um, so we pursued the application process. Uh, James Barr, one of my full-time employees, he's a bodybuilder, aside from being a, a staff member of us, so pure fitness is his ancillary duty for the department. So he and I worked together to submit the grant request to them. It was funded at fifty thousand dollars for nothing but gym equipment for our Dilwyn Station.
Awesome.
So in short, we'll have a Gold's Gym two-point-oh uh at our disposal. Um, we, I, I wanted to get this appropriated by you guys tonight because we have a vendor online, actually the owner of, of the Elite Fitnesses, you know, in Appomattox and Farmville. He vendors and sells uh gym equipment, has been able to come up with some great deals. A lot of these big corporate offices that are doing nothing but telework from here on out are kind of decommissioning some grade A-level stuff that, you know, is pretty much brand new, that we're able to get our hands on, and we're doing some brand new stuff. So uh I think with, if you guys appropriate this, within a month to two months, the upstairs portion of our Dilwyn Station over there behind BBNT packed full uh gym equipment from anything cardiovascular to strength training to CrossFit and functional fitness, yeah, there'll be ellipticals and treadmills and rowers. Um, and with that, you know, it's not just gonna be a free-for-all. You know, my department has an SOG in place. They have to do an hour of PT every day, up to two hours a day. So with that asset at our disposal, I can now enforce that SOG finally, and then your bar can help tailor people's specific plans. And like I said, it's open to law enforcement, fire you guys as well. Um, so, you know, try to facilitate uh better operational readiness of those of us that are responsible for the law. Anyways, that's what I'm.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Ms. Chairman.
The motion by Supervisor Bryant, seconded by Supervisor Bryant to accept and cons- and uh approve this appropriation. All in favor, please record your vote aye, those opposed no.
Just want to thank Mr. Davis for a great job again. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Good job.
Thank you. Um, other board, yes, Sir Supervisor Davis.
You think you're gonna get Brett to work every one hour a day?
He has to. He checks us out.
He's doing that, he's doing those. Dennis, he's doing those ten-ounce curls.
All right, are there any other board matters before we adjourn?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Supervisor Bryant.
Um, I'd like to, uh, if you would, please consider making an appointment uh to look into the economic development of the industrial uh park opportunity that we currently have.
Okay.
Set up a committee with the, with the, the attorney, the finance director, Mr. Carter, and two board members, and Ms. Edmiston.
I'm already on the economic development committee.
You're, you, what's, what's that?
This is in my district, uh, so I'd like to consider.
Okay, so, um.
Have you heard any issues on it yet?
We have two economic development committee members.
Yeah, but this is separate. This is just for the economic park.
No feasibility study.
This is the project currently we have going forward.
Right.
So, so, uh, so we would have Vice Chairman Chambers and Supervisor, because it's your district?
Yes, sir.
I want to be on it, though, since I'm already on the economic committee, development committee. I mean, Mr. Chambers.
But, but this is totally separate.
I know that.
I can step, I, I, I'll, I'll yield to you, Don.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
So.
I mean, we've, we've already talked about it.
You and, right, right. You and I have had a discussion.
Right.
Uh, about it, and, and you and uh Vice Chairman Chambers.
Okay.
Uh, would, would make a good pair.
Yes, sir.
On that committee.
Thank you.
So I would.
That's my motion.
Okay, so it's a motion. Okay, so that's the motion, and it has been seconded by Supervisor Allen for uh Mr. Chambers and Mr. Matthews. If you're in favor, please record your vote aye, those opposed no. And Mr., yes, sir. And it's unanimous. Um, so we're now going to adjourn, and keep in mind that we're gonna adjourn until the eighteenth, when we have our public hearings. So that's the third Monday in April, is that correct? Not the second, but the third, due to the change in the budget calendar.
Adjourn to recess.
We adjourn. Correct, Mr. Carter?
Adjourn, okay.
Okay.